Just by water. So great. Something to keep in mind.
A vibrant city is the backdrop to a vibrant life. Fun under an Indiana sky. Distinct dining, industry, jobs, our community gateway. All made possible by tax increment financing. TIF.
We're competing with cities much, much larger than us. So we've got to be able to put together a toolbox that at least puts us in a level playing field. And one of those tools is TIF financing. The TIF is guaranteed. It's the biggest tool in the box. Sometimes I think it was the only tool in the box. I think people would be surprised if they understood how much the TIF tool has been used in this community to move forward. Some of the products that everybody loves.
Our assessed value is going up five times since we started leveraging our TIF dollars. And when those assessed values go up, that really helps your schools.
Keeping tax increment financing as the tool that it is to make these projects happen for job creation, quality of place, talent attraction is absolutely essential for the state of Indiana.
TIF is sometimes a hard concept for people to get their thoughts around. Basically, nothing happens if you don't build this.
Tax increment financing is an economic development tool that helps a business pay for improvements within a targeted geographical area of a county, city, or town. A TIF district. A business pays taxes on its property. When the property becomes part of a TIF district, new taxes generated from improvements to the property go into the TIF fund. These funds are used for additional infrastructure the business needs, like roads, water, sewer, and more. TIF is used for construction of buildings or other private enhancements, or to pay for public improvements such as better streets and sidewalks. TIF can also be utilized for acquiring land, job training programs, and raising or renovating buildings. More than 1,000 TIF projects exist in communities across Indiana. Community gateways, repurposed historic buildings, projects that retain or attract jobs. And in Fort Wayne, Indiana, an innovative mixed-use development that includes a ballpark.
Opening day for Fort Wayne TICX was April 16th, 2009. I remember it like it was yesterday. We actually, on the field, had the best minor league team in over 30 years at that point. We won 101 games, won the only Midwest League championship. But more than that, it was the first step of the revitalization of downtown Fort Wayne, Indiana.
A city's downtown, its center, heart, comes with an energy to be valued and cultivated. When a downtown thrives, a community thrives.
That was a pretty distressed part of our downtown area. So it was a pretty logical move to take that and do something with it. So we had some very heavy hitters in the business community. You probably don't give a rip about baseball. Understood that having a new product downtown that would help them attract new workforce, retain their current workforce was the genesis for this. And it's one of our redevelopment directors said at the time, it's a matter of math. The ballpark down here gets about 150,000 people. Now, what if we had 150,000 people walking around downtown Fort Wayne? It's gotta be better for retail, dining, the town exposure, everything. But selling an idea to the citizens was brutal. It could not have happened without TIF. We had a district available to us with enough income over time to bond what we needed to to pay for the ballpark itself. And it was only through redevelopment and the use of TIF and the catalyst of Harrison Squares that the entire downtown is totally rejuvenated. White Lodge, who has properties all over this state, said, hey, we are gonna build a downtown Hampton that is gonna rival any Hampton in the country. And it does. And we love the ball and the measurement on the side and the rooftop lounge, the awesome burger bar, and then their statue of Johnny Appleseed, you know, sitting on the park bench where I don't know how many hundred people a day get their picture taken next to that. It's that little character stuff that really goes a long way and it's been great. There's all sorts of synergies going on. The hotel has helped the Grand Wayne Center, our convention center, to be much more productive in bringing in much larger events than they had in the past. Beautiful restored Embassy Theater that today is used over and over by traveling shows, concerts. It added to that dynamics of downtown, all spurred on by this Harrison Square project. The business leaders and the political people believed in it, and it happened. And the amazing thing now is some 12, 13 years later, over my shoulder, well over a half a billion dollars in projects now. If we didn't have the guts to do this project, the rest probably wouldn't have happened.
TIF helps with many types of mixed-use developments, including retail, entertainment, hotels, or in Jasper, Indiana, a beautiful urban living space.
River Center was somewhat of an eyesore here in Jasper. It was called the old Jasper Cabinet Building. 231 brought me by this building that I wondered what the heck happened. I asked the mayor of Jasper, what do you see in the future for that building? And how can we form a partnership? The new mayor at the time, Terry Seitz, had a vision that it could be something else and really a vision for this entire area. So we created what was called the Downtown Riverfront Master Plan.
As we walked through the buildings to see if they could be renovated, there was a lot of dreaming going on. When we came down to it, we said, this could work. This could really be something unique.
It became pretty apparent that there was gonna have to be some kind of incentive available for use in these potential projects. So that really began our journey of establishing our first TIF locally. The TIF was one of the most important parts of the decision to build and go forward with River Center. Without the TIF, we couldn't have kept the history here. River Center kept the main structure of the building.
Along our, what we call a river, it was just nothing but brush. And it wasn't used as an asset. So we built the Jasper Riverwalk. And we have the mill, which is to replicate a mill that used to reside at that location.
River Center's theme is live, work, and play. And in a small town such as Jasper, that's a lifestyle no one has ever seen. There was a lot of pushback. And a lot of that was based on the idea that we were gonna somehow be using that TIF to take dollars away from other entities. And so that began a huge process of educating. It has really attracted the younger generation back home to Jasper, which energizes the city again. We have amenities such as with the Potoka behind us and the Tin Clark Cultural Library across the street. We have the train system. We have the ability to walk downtown.
If it wouldn't have been for TIF being in place and allowing us to build the infrastructure there around the facility with the roads, sidewalks, we'd still be looking at no dilapidated building.
We get calls now, certainly on a weekly basis, maybe on a daily basis, from prospective developers interested in various types of projects.
And now as people come into the community and they look at those, they say, wow, I can't believe this is my hometown.
When Greendale, Indiana's well-established Queen City Candy was acquired by Batera Brands in 2018, the company began to look at moving out of the community. Greendale needed to act quickly to retain this industry that was so critical to its economy.
Queen City Candy is our third largest utility customer, electric utility customer. They're one of our largest employers we have in the city. So it's very important for they stay here.
So we sit down, we work with them, and we said, what can we do for them to make them stay here? And we came up with a great deal, we think. This project at Queen City and Batera is perfect to explain that without those TIF incentives, this project wouldn't have in any great deal. It would have been most likely in Texas.
We took a look at what it is they were, you know, offering as far as incentives and other ways that that they could help us, whether it's employment help or land permitting and that sort of thing. And they're probably not aware of this, but their incentive funds were at the top tier. First and foremost, that was very helpful. It made no sense to stay here.
We knew we were giving them a great package. We didn't know how great, but in our mind, it was a great package. And when they stayed, we were really excited to see them stay.
Lafayette, Indiana, TIF was used to attract companies and create new employment opportunities. There's a lot of things that that take place for a community to create an environment where jobs can be created, where the private sector can feel good about making investments in the community, being able to offer incentives that deal with machinery and equipment needs and training. All those things help fill in the gaps to make us competitive in a global marketplace. We're not just competing with the state across from us or a city down the road. We're competing with with different countries and different cities. And TIF helps fill those gaps to get all those things done, to make us shovel ready, to make us be able to react at the speed of business. TIF was essential in swaying GE Aviation to select Lafayette as the location for its new facility.
Once we had selected the states that were gonna compete for GE's new home, we had selected down to the top five. And then only after then did we really start looking at the incentive package between the state, the county, and the city. Now, TIF was a big piece of that. And it helped GE select this site as as one of the sites to to consider.
When a company is proposing to expand or locate here in this community, the incentive package includes not only greater Lafayette commerce, the city of Lafayette, the city of West Lafayette, Kipnew County, and the state of Indiana. We provide a uniform incentive package inclusive of all of those entities.
GE Aviation coming is certainly just a wonderful opportunity for the greater Lafayette area. The college has an aviation technology program, and it's designed to prepare persons to work specifically in aviation facilities such as GE Aviation.
And so TIF gives us that ability to do that in a way that actually supports the private sector that allows them to be competitive in a global marketplace. Franklin, Indiana, worked to bring their downtown back to life using TIF, but then needed to draw foot traffic into the heart of the historic town.
The major corridor from I-65 into our town, into our community. You wouldn't know we have this amazing historic downtown square from the interchange. It was not inviting, it was not welcoming.
Out by I-65 and and our main gateway into the community, it was blighted. So we embarked upon some some light remediation.
The result that we have is not just help that area, it's helped the whole city. It's huge. Every time I talk to businesses, they are really impressed on how we used our TIF dollars the right way to invest in ourselves.
We get so many people using those trails. It not only looks nice, but it's being used.
Fast forward to today, and we have a couple of nice chain hotels out by the interchange that are busy. And I think the biggest piece of all of this is talking about the assessed value and the growth of our assessed value is the lifeblood of of any community has grown five times since this project started.
And when those assessed values go up, that really helps your schools. And our schools and our city, we work really well together to make this a better city.
Often, there's a misconception that TIF takes away from public schools. But schools do not lose tax dollars to TIF funds as long as the but-for test is met. But for TIF, this project would not occur. A school produces a budget based on tax dollars it receives from the school district. When a TIF district is created for a new project that's within the school district, the taxes on only the new improvements or the project go toward the TIF fund for this development. After the TIF district expires, these taxes are added to the original tax base. Additional money only became available because of the new project, a project that wouldn't have happened without TIF.
We want the school to consider this as part of their own toolbox so that if they have a project that they believe would be eligible for a use of TIF dollars, we want them to come and talk to us about what that can look like and how we can help. That's the goal because we are all in this together.
When civic and business leaders work together, tax increment financing is available to transform a region and its people. Indiana statute for a TIF project requires the but-for test agreement that without the use of TIF, this renovation, building, riverwalk, or other development would not have happened.
There is absolutely no question that Fort Wayne would not have Harrison Square. And every single individual component that makes up Harrison Square would not exist but for tax increment financing.
I can say with certainty that River Center would not be here if we did not have TIF available.
The opportunities that we have out by the interstate on I-65 were made available to us only through the use of TIF. If we didn't have tax increment financing, it would not have been made available.
If it is vital to us, hadn't been able to bring businesses in, retain businesses, help businesses grow. If we didn't have that money, we would have lost out on a couple of businesses. Unless we as communities have something to bring to the table, true economic environment that's healthy and and growing for cities whatever occur.
We just broadcast it to the world and the people. So, um, that was fun. I'm enjoying the video. I was just trying to find some course to walk, will be eight. It was related to what we do. Uh, I thought this was a great video choice for us, just a great reminder of what we do. Uh, I don't know, I'm sure you guys have probably seen this, if not. But anyways, I just figured we should play that before we start to talk about all of our TIF projects, of what we want to do. Uh, I do know, uh, I guess, uh, maybe you guys are bringing some examples of what I would like to see or or projects you guys think would be best, uh, think of. So, uh, we'll go ahead and start opening up the meeting here, uh, with the agenda. But yeah, feel free to take calls. One will be for the teacher building and one is for our our projects around town. So that will be, the teacher building is one is one for us to start to work on the RFP, RFP forum. So that way we can see what we want of the projects. Uh, maybe go over there. I know we still a little delayed. If you get a message from there, go ahead and help us start with anything that wraps. So we are large, they're very, we are large, yeah. Hope everybody threw me a question in my. Yeah, all of our meetings are past the deadline. July 1st. Yeah, so it's like July 1st. So this is an exception, but there's. Decisions being made. Right there. I'm raising doubt, but, um, if they add something, we want to. Chip status or agenda for next week. Yeah, yeah, probably go Tuesday. I don't know, is there, is there a way to structure this more before I thought it? Yeah. So I do know the future of it is probably gonna go on all levels. Of course, the months are higher in here, September. Todd and I have interacted together and and Dan as well, um, trying to create some ideas, um, for what's the working potential for this, what we want to talk about. Basically, just with us going through this prioritization survey, it will click on, it will definitely get them. Uh, this will basically rank what, uh, what we would like to see put together for the teacher building. Uh, and, uh, and we're gonna do that. Um, there's also spots for ideas as well. So if you have any ideas, if we go through it, um, you know, we can look at that. But if you guys wanna take your time to do this one now, um, you can do that. Or we can go like this, we'll talk to our other projects next time. Guys, start the process on this. So that way we can think more about the district building. But all of you guys make that decision. What's our, what's our, where do we start? Uh, tomorrow is the air following testing. Uh, we did get approval from the city council on Monday, um, to purchase the building. And, uh, tomorrow is the air following testing, that'll be for about eight hours. And then we'll have the results in 24 hours. So it was right before.
September. What was you saying, what did you think it was?
September 16th. Right before Apple Plus. Yeah, it's just, it's just. Is there any other due diligence process? No, the only thing right now is the air following test. And then that's just based on the recommendation. Uh, it's similar for the, uh, trying to figure out about a half month. What consideration do they tend, the current tenants of the building? Probably wanna structure that as usual staying. Can't stay, we can't stay here and still the program. I know there's more residential time. And we just wanna make sure we get whoever. Time to move if needed. And to give ourselves enough time to get anyone out. I know right now, um, Vintage House, uh, I said they were closing, uh, before we closed. So that's basically available. We have gas and a question, I said, do we know? Oh, yeah, that's fine. I think while we're trying to figure out what we would suggest. Because my suggestion is to keep that spot closed so they get this opportunity to work that door. That spot closed. Uh, we could potentially do an elevator, make the ADA accessible to go up, to go upstairs. Uh, but right now, uh, Vintage House is where the old bathroom is at. Uh, so we could put, split that off or work with the group to see what we'd like to be achieved. With that area there, make that additional entrance on that side for one to be upstairs.
Yeah, but that's the, I mean, we, we're, you're saying was just, she's gonna move out, we're gonna keep it out.
In the meantime, until they figure out what that space will be. And that would be till the end of year too.
Right.
Figure out, you know, what what the choice is.
Yeah, what about?
I don't wanna put somebody in there, like, well, they have their spaces decreasing because we're gonna put that over there for upstairs.
What about the, and I know this is some of the, that the little tiny building next to it, what is in there? A holistic doctor? She's actually in part of that, in part of Vintage House, really. Remember they blocked off that back?
Yeah, she's in the front part of it, yeah, yeah. She's actually wanting to expand to the back potentially.
The only reason I noticed is being a baby station there one time that used to be. Yeah, well, before, wait, before that, but we used to be able to walk through Vintage.
Yeah, I told all the tenants, you know, right now, we're afraid to say, would you guys?
Yeah, I was just thinking of the, what is that? The cake lady, is that?
Yeah, she's, she's on those two.
I was gonna say, if we could put a retail spot in there, this is gonna take how long before we can get?
Right, well, the thought of getting this RFQ set up is we can have that alibi for this year.
And if we had an idea or a plan, you know, carve out the area that we need to work on, and still allow that space. But we need to get to that point where, what are the plans? Like Martin said, if we have, we don't have an idea on the plan. They'll wanna rent a space to someone and say, oh, by the way, it would take me. Except for we're treating away from it. I think we just need to.
Yeah, I was just thinking, you know, a hole.
Right.
For downtown. So I mean, you know, this time of year and holidays and I think.
Right.
Well, we gotta get that window fixed too.
Yeah, we gotta. I do know there's been, uh, AC issue with the office. I know they have temporarily have a thing. Inside there, to bring those presents in the middle.
They're very hot.
Tuesday, every fourth, Tuesday, and every Wednesday. And my appointment is wrong, and I have to play the spaces.
Well, that would be.
Yeah.
That would be neat.
I mean, if we wanted to, if we wanted to have a use for it and, you know, maybe give some people the opportunities to smaller businesses to.
Chose for the holiday season, you know, things.
Yeah, 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 I mean, just a.
Pop-up, like a pop-up, right, pop-up homes, right.
You'll leave a vice space for the meantime.
That would be neat.
With you, with the understanding that things might change.
Yeah.
We might have.
First of the year.
If you could have, what whatever you wanna call it, you know, an inside mini mall.
Yeah, basically.
I mean, we could, we could extend it longer than the Christmas season too. But would that give us an incubator space in the meantime?
Yeah. Yeah, it's just.
Yeah, my thought was also like, so for the vacant space, we could just put on their coming soon new project.
Yeah, yeah, so there's.
So there's excitement that no one else is going on.
Just like when they covered the windows, uh, when they put the boards in front of, oh my gosh, everybody was asking, it was cool. Everybody was asking, oh, what's going in there, what's going in there?
Oh, yeah. When Richmond, when we were there, they printed out the fake windows and put them on the windows upstairs.
Those are neat, yeah.
Yeah. But I could say I was coming soon like a mall, but I like the idea of having it open. Actually, that's a great idea for, but they have to make choices. Um, for that, so.
But I do think the sooner we can get the RFQ out and the ideas generated, the better I'm moving to be in a position.
So when you say RFQ, we're, we actually asking for proposals? So we asking for, the key to focus on a few parts?
Yeah, I think, I think it's really a request for proposal. Proposals on what, what do you see as the the building? And I think we have to have some, some parameters that what we may expect.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
As I'm looking through this, you know, I'm looking at these six items, and I put six on all of them, you know, so okay, that's fine. What I'm really thinking is that we don't know. Um, we don't know what a potential developer may have interest in. You know, that a potential developer may believe to be successful. And so while we probably know we don't want this, in that building is probably a pretty wide array of what would be a question for us in there. And so I'm reluctant to, uh, timp down anything that a potential developer might offer up. And so I don't know, I mean, what, what I, I guess the ideal thing would be to have RFP. I think, I don't know, maybe you can exclude some things in there. But to see what developers indeed do wanna do, that, and then, uh, judge it on the merits of what they wanna do. One of those things, but, um, to open up the door and see what the private sector thinks could be successful in that building.
Right, because we saw interest from our original partner that was with it. And he's understanding too that, you know, we could open this up. Appreciates the idea of that too, because he would be generally like to do a potential partnership too outside of either. Um, and then we also have another developer in town that's that's interested in in that spot. So, so we do have interest, and I, I think opening up here to local, our local developers is gonna be a part of it. Because everybody's excited about something being that special.
So do we hear from local people first before we put it out or how?
I, I don't know that I would. I don't, I don't know that I would, well, there, I think there needs to be some, some waiting to, are they local? You know, but to me, the the locals would have a higher score than someone from outside. Depending on their ideas, I mean, if it gets scored for the idea that they're proposing, probably the amount of investment would be another thing. Just what are the, what are the teaching terms, what's the rubric that they're going by, right?
And then, uh, the other thing that comes into play here is just, um, you know, how more can we develop the facade and have that vision? So it's obviously there's, there's tenants and what they use the building as. But then there's what's a building look like, which is a.
Your tenants and what they use the building is, but then there's what's a building look like, which is a, the issue for us. Um, God, now it's schematic design, I think, level documentation is. Yeah, they killed, yeah, done. Um, and then I assume that's what we need to the RFP. You know, in some way.
That's the thought from Todd.
Yeah, yeah. Um, can, we could choose to pursue that in a number of different ways, meaning put that in the RFP and pay. The, you know, number one priority that. If this fails, it's pretty much goes to the south of us. And then. What are you gonna have? How, you know, what, how are we gonna act if I'm building any of this building? Um. We could also. Keep it on the precedent, we need to improve this to the building. And then we make a building of it. I think either way, we're gonna be probably contributing funds for this during that building. I think that's probably a very likely way. Where someone says, a, a, a proposal submitter is gonna come to us and say, this is what I wanna do with the building, and I'm willing to deal with the outside building. We want the building for one dollar, and we also want. This much in tip funds in order to make improvements to the exterior of that building. Um, and they're probably contributing something, but we're probably also contributing something, just, I guess. But, um. It kinda comes down to that. Making a viable project, because I think if we put this out for proposal. And said, okay, this is what we want. For the exterior of this building, this is what we want you to do for the interior of the building, we want you to do all of that. It's not economically viable. In fact, goes back to the definition of two funds, and it's a project that becomes economically viable because we're invested in two funds. And so I think that's what it's gonna come down to, I don't know in what, in what measure, I don't know how much they're gonna need to make it economically viable. But I think we're gonna need something to make it economically viable. It's just my opinion in two cents, so I'm interested in everybody else's thoughts on the same issue. But that's my.
Anyone else? I know you're just jumping in.
No, you're gonna have us know. Things if you have some thoughts on that share.
And I, I mean, I agree, I agree that we're gonna have to. But I feel like there's a lot of hoopla saying we can be jumping through before we get to that point. And both, I know that we wanna be careful what the outside looks like. I mean, that's my, I mean, that's my experience coming from someplace else. And seeing what's happened when we don't, and control's a terrible word, but stay in control of what the exterior of the building looks like. Because you'll end up with a modern building because somebody decided they want, they wanna go modern. So that's my, that's one of my fears, yeah, I think we need to stay in control of the outside of the building, at least.
Yeah, we, we can do that, we can do the improvements ourselves, because that's the easiest way for us to do the exterior is for us to. Own the building, do it then. Do the building how we would like on the exterior, but having in mind too, the, the potential people that are gonna be. In with RFP on here. Um, and then, you know, get the averages to a greater level of the seller to them for that, 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 that or some funds.
So, so what you're saying is you believe more for the improvements to the exterior under our leadership than that way out of the proposal.
If we want to stick to the pill, yeah. Or otherwise, you know, we're gonna have. The jump through some other, jump through some other mechanisms that to deal with the exterior that they want. Yeah, my part on that.
Yeah, I mean, you can try and do it in either way, in, in the other, or at least. So I guess, yeah, we own the building now, uh, so right now we can just, you know, do the normal bidding for public improvement. For our plan. Or we could sell it and, you know, with strings attached to the expectancy. Um. I think it might be better to incentivize that as almost a bond situation where because of all these stuff around some of, so the. Purchaser would either have to carry the bond. Or in order to get paid back in tip funds. Or you could. I guess we had the facade improvement agreement, we could, we could follow through with that. Yeah, I mean. Either, it seems the easiest on my end, which isn't necessarily a consideration for you guys, I mean. If either way work, um, is just doing it yourself where you have most control. And if you're gonna put that kind of money down anyway for the facade. You can do the facade, and maybe, and part of it is, it's hard to. Separate the internal and external work, I know. Um. How, what's the scope of, of work that needs to be done? How much do we wanna do before it's sold, and how much do we wanna put on a developer?
But we own it, that cleans up all the internal, exterior.
Correct.
Complication, right, right. It's not, we can, we can do anything to the interior.
Yeah.
Because we own it.
Yes, correct.
I'm not saying it doesn't complicate it to what we are thinking about wealth and how we wanna bid that, but as far as. Rules that we have to divide by.
That's our building.
We're as clean as can be now.
Right.
So to me, we bought that building to do the exterior like we wanna do. So at least that's how I've understood that, I have a little, you'll sell me on it, but I have, in my mind, it's, we're doing all the exterior work. And the nice thing is, the reason we bought this building, it's, if it gets a little hairy, what's considered outside the inside, so we redo all the windows. Now, now we're gonna redo the trim around those windows on the inside of the building. We just do it because that was us. And then we can decide where it builds from there. Now, I know there's still steps up, it would be nice to know what we're doing up there, if there's something we want to, or need slightly different exterior. Uh, but I feel like we own that, so that we control that. To every level we want, then we're happy to see what the design is gonna do with the building as we have chosen to restore.
So.
And that, that exterior facade reason, it might be. An option for us long-term, because, yeah, we still, I mean, we don't wanna sell it to somebody, if they do something else with the exterior. Like, we want, you know, so it, it's definitely an option for us.
We, we keep that sound, if we do the improvements to the east side, well, you know. We can sell it, maintain the east side.
It's, it's one, there's so many different. What is it happening, you fixing up?
Well, not necessarily, that you, you can say, you can put certain responsibility on the developer to maintain it, and, 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 uh, if they fail to do so. You know, put a legal property.
But I imagine we'll have some different opinions on that here, but I don't know that I can actually know that facade. Yeah.
Right, yeah.
Right. But that's just like, we're doing this.
Oh, yeah.
How about something else?
Doesn't, isn't there a board, a historical board, don't we have a historical?
Historic preservation? Same name right here.
Dan, isn't there a historical board that has to, they have to go through to change the facade any?
If, if it's.
Yeah, what?
Yeah, so the, the term would be a, a single site historic district. So the historic preservation commission has been talking about the future as well. And, um. Will be recommending to council to designate make that building as a single site historic, district. Meaning that any exterior changes. Would be reviewed by historic reservations while ongoing for the life of the structure, no matter who owns it.
So the whole downtown is not considered historical?
The whole downtown is on the national register, but that is basically just honorary distinction, not a local control system.
No, you own the building, which you want to. Right now, I mean, I'm not saying that's.
No, I, I realize, I just did not realize that, true.
Can I ask how that's enforced? Or, uh?
Let's enforce.
If we designate that as a single site historic, and you're telling me they have to.
They can't get building.
I know a lot of people that aren't gonna ask, and are gonna do some things, how, how is that actually?
That happens before the building permit is issued.
If they don't get the permit, they put a sign up out there, or they put up a little thing that, you know, oh, shoot. Like, we physically remove that, we make them remove it, there's tax, like. I'm not trying to be, I'm just really asking, like, right, what are our, like, how are we enforcing that? So, because.
I think they go to court. For removal.
Right.
If they come in to confirm that, and that. One of the restrictions to getting permits is it has to be approved by the historic restoration. Commission before they get that permit, so if they do work without permit, then, then we could go in and sabotage. Maybe we'll do this. At it.
So, and, and enforcing it.
And we don't wanna maintain enforcement of that, at least that. We get assigned it. If they were to.
Right. And the, the historic. The historic, uh, designation. Could give the new owner an opportunity for tax credits, right?
Let's take their sustained tax credit.
Available, so. But you, it depends on what. What the developer wants to do and what.
I mean, though, be more loose. Their standard, creating high standards.
So going back to the drawings from, uh. Yeah. How much of that is usable for us, so? That we're not going and repeating everything, I mean, we paid them.
Yeah, I, I personally think we take that.
But.
To manage design and we develop.
Yeah, rather than start at ground zero.
There's no reason.
No, that's.
That's what, if that's what we decide we want for the exterior.
The building's gonna effectively be unchanged.
Why? So, starting back?
I mean, that was the road. That was the road we were going down until I decided. We're just looking for a, for a good partner.
And we have those drawings and plans and everything.
Yes. It's. It's not at the point of construction drawings, it's not a table document yet, but.
Yeah, that's how.
Yeah.
If you made it.
Yeah.
Hey, can, can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
You're absolutely.
First of all, sorry I can't make that, make it tonight. Um, but I wanted to chime in, I, I think your question. Jane about can we use those drawings?
Yeah.
Um, I suppose we can go two routes, one, we do the exterior and someone does the interior. But if they wanna change something on the exterior, that kinda hand, it's, that's difficult. Uh, but we have enough information on this drawings to tie it to a detailed RFP. Where we can almost have a narrative and define the entire project and have drawings that reference what we expect on the exterior. We give them the option. To be creative on what the interior spaces are. And, and put that all in kind of a scoring sheet and pick the, pick the best one, that's. That's kinda what I was thinking as we're, as we're going through next steps and, and developing that survey. I'll just throw that out there.
So what you're saying, Todd, is the RFP would include these drawings, uh, knowing that. The redevelopment commission is gonna do the work. So the, the, the potential developer, knowing that score is gonna be done by someone else. And they still submit a proposed contract.
Basically, maybe two.
Yeah. Is that, is that the way you're saying it, Todd?
Yeah, I, I think I caught most of that, um.
We still, we, we still do the exterior work, we're just showing them a picture of what's to come.
Well, or I, I guess my biggest holdup would be, what if we do this big exterior and a developer comes in and says, you know what, I really wanna do, um, you know, boutique up here. But I need to change that one storefront to make it a front entrance to it, and like, I don't, I don't wanna waste that money to do that. Um, cause that could be a, a very well possibility. That's why I wanna avoid.
This is schematically what we're thinking. But give them the option if they would like to modify it somewhere.
We don't want, if we don't want construction drawings yet, because we don't really know what's up there, to know what to construction draw, we want conceptual.
This.
This. To then get those ideas in to decide where we're at, then. That also plays into our determinant of the additional cost we may need to incur. Next place. Cause my, my, my understanding is also this, first, when we put out our best proposal, we could actually not like anything that's in and be like, hey. We're just gonna fix up the outside auction off and be done, because we didn't like the things that came in. Or we're gonna go back to drawing board talk a little more and then re-put out the best proposal again. Based on either different parameters or more specific requests that we're looking for, right? And we don't. We can do this and say, no, we don't like what's right.
And at that point, go ahead, Todd.
I, I think you always have an out to say, if you don't like the submittals, you can say, nope, and start over and do the exterior.
Okay, the other thing is if we don't get any good proposals on interior. We can say, it's our building, we're gonna do what we want, and then we just lease it out ourselves.
Sure.
Is that, we can do that.
You lease it out. One. Drawback is that you won, so you don't get any.
Right, right, you pay ourselves.
What, what I, what I add, I mean. Sort of depends on how the project goes, if it is gonna be a designated historic site. Subject to these controls, he's already gonna be limited, whoever buys it on how much they can do to the exterior and interior. Especially if they're going for grants, for deductions, like, they're gonna have to call the secretary to say interior standards. It's gonna be. They're not gonna, there, there's only really exceptions for ADA compliance, maybe fire safety. I mean, maybe vanilla there, so that is one reason maybe to allow, you know. That, but as far as. That goes, if it is going that way, which it may or may not, um. That's definitely something I think people should be behind.
Yeah.
Just, uh. It's. Is that the way it's going now, I mean, the designation side, I think.
Well, I think that's a recommendation to council. My thinking is, let's. Find out who the developer is first and find out what direction they wanna go. But I know this historic preservation, they're looking for. Projects that they can really work on, and they've got the depot, West Park Pavilion are the only two structures really they.
Uh, yeah, West Park Pavilion, the depot, um, Madison Street, the brick.
Right, right.
And, uh.
Park. Yeah. So I think they, you know.
Heart, heart of it. Wrapped in another.
Connect to the museum.
Roll the house, oh, yes, yes.
So that, that is up for discussion, I think I'd like to hear. This groups. You know, before we go to council and get something approved, do we? Do we do it now, do we wait, do we do it, so that's.
Wouldn't wanna limit us, wouldn't wanna try and find a feeling factor, but, um. Can there, can there be some discussions with, I mean, we know what the group potentials are for. Um, proposal submitters, can we have some informal discussions with them regarding that issue? Is that a reasonable thing for us to do? Just in, like.
Can you bring him in for like an interview, is that what you're saying? Or just.
In formal talk, formal talk.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah.
Well, I think you can have executive sessions for, um, economic incentive programs. I remember I had maybe double check the statute, but. Set up like executive sessions with the whole board potentially. Um.
To act, to talk about, you know, what their intentions are inside.
They would send a program around this proposed restoration of this building.
Could, could we have like a letter of, who's interested? And then we have some meeting set up, if you're interested, let's come in, we can talk, let's. Talk about somebody, if they have questions for us.
Yeah.
We might have questions for them.
We, we may gain the information that would really help us with some of these issues we're talking about, people beyond historic presentation as well. How structured it will be.
Is there a reason we couldn't do that? Try and gauge interest first. Before we.
I, I, I mean, I guess, what do you engage in, like, uh?
Like, who is interested in, in the building?
Ultimately, it's not limiting who can submit a proposal, right, because even if someone doesn't come in.
You can do it in public still, right, you can do it in public meetings. Public hearing, whatever you wanna do.
Yeah. Cause I think they would wanna stay confidential, you know what I mean?
If that's the case, then it might be an executive session thing, if you're gonna bring people in to this best potential center package.
I'm, I'm seeing that, because I don't think they wanna show their card, some of, you know, people that are interested in doing this time. This is not a small hundred dollar, I, this is a, a very large. Right, and I'm saying, I don't think they would wanna show their hand this quickly about what they're, if they're looking to be interested in it, so.
It's inviting competition, yeah.
I'm just.
Nobody across the street.
Right, exactly.
The only other thing I wanted to just say before I forget is that, that one, one gap that we maybe have to be prepared for is that if we do the RFP with SD drawings. In, in, um, creating at least the assumption on a potential, uh. Um, submitters are that we're gonna do this to the exterior of the building. We don't, we still don't know what this costs to do the exterior of the building, they haven't put out the bid yet, and so we just have to be prepared for that. But, uh. I mean, we can. We can take some guesses at it, we can try to get some. Ballpark cost from some people we know. But, um.
Side lyrics, that's all, bro.
Yeah, I was gonna say, what?
Twenty twenty-two?
Yeah, yeah, that's.
And was the budget done with the mind of we're restoring this consistently?
Well, they, they had, uh, the drawings still.
It wasn't, that's the plan. They, well, they had the drawings.
They had the drawings, so they were just kind of.
There's a lot of notes in there, stuff they left out completely or pretty close because they weren't sure how to. Tom, can I say something, Tom, just a little?
Yeah, just a quick comment on what we were talking about before, like working with a developer in a special session or not. We could, we could go through a simple RFQ process to find out who's interested, who's qualified and pick the top two. And then we have automatically kind of two develops we know we're going to work with and then do the custom RFP with all the details, the schematics, some cost, primary cost estimates and stuff like that.
I guess my, my reservation on that end of thing is that we, if we're selling the property, there is a process under the redevelopment statutes, unlike the typical RFP process, which requires you to advertise it for sale. It has its own thing and you can't really pre-select people. That sort of award of the property though is pretty flexible. It's similar to the design build kind of bidding where it's, you can choose the, the best offer, not the highest or beyond that award. It's the highest bidder or lowest bidder or, and then you can come up with a lot of criteria. So. That as long as you have them know that whoever you might think is our, wins the RFQ, you can't promise them anything. And don't lead them down a path, you know, suggesting, we think you're the most qualified. Uh, but you have to go through a whole nother round of, of bidding.
Yeah, that's what we did with the fire station. That's kind of the route I was kind of describing.
What you're saying, what you're saying is ultimately the RFP has to be open to everybody. Exactly, you can't shortlist.
I don't know if you can shortlist like the offers. I mean. You, criteria are very flexible, so.
Fire station.
You know, come up with an idea that you create that makes sense there's, that's one thing, but.
You can say, make me an offer, one guy made offer seven hundred thousand dollars, one guy may offer two hundred thousand, but say, here's what I'm doing. Here's what this guy's doing. We may like the two hundred thousand dollar offer way more.
But you'll, you'll want to put together a good rubric before you advertise center in the offering of the property. Have that nailed down ahead of time.
Clear as mud.
Yeah.
What do we really think is the best way to go? I guess I'm still a little. I think I'd like to put out some RFPs to see what's out there, who's coming in and talking and then we can really start to have conversations, do we like what we're seeing or not? And that tells us whether we want to pursue that and considering the law. Are we going to go and start our own track to do it? Yeah, but until we get people in on it with comment, I don't know how, how we know what's out there to do. And I think we can put a general rubric together, what we want to see, but like at the end, I'll be able to, maybe still be able to say, we're not doing any of this for now. And table it and we come back to this later with a more specific and better rubric, of what we feel like.
We're tabled and make things fixed here.
But that allows us to see what's out there and know what we really want to do with it. I mean, I think. Yeah, I think it's probably, it probably works. I think that there's, there's a timing thing involved in that. I, I'd want to get that going pretty quickly here. Um, in order to, you know, know that, uh, we're really going to find someone, work with them and get things going. Or we're going to find someone, work and not find someone, get to know it. And then also it's going to happen.
Do we have people showing interest already? So how many people do we have showing interest right now?
We have two separate investors that are interested in it.
Okay.
And one is like, would like the time to go down to that.
So my question is, we still have to do these two questionnaires before we can consider those two people, correct? Or can we just go with these two people?
No.
No, you don't.
We have to put it out there.
And I think, I think we want to put it out there. I don't think we want to just limit it to two. I think there might be.
That's what I was trying to say, yes, that's where I was going with this. That's where, that's what I was saying, so we're.
And it's still early enough that we don't all have to put a ton of money or time or effort into it. They don't have to go out and get all this like, it's still in this phase of like, what can it be? What do we want to see? And then like, oh, maybe one of the ideas blows us away, like we want to go down this path. The problem is we still may go down the path and run the cost, both for them and us don't work. I mean, that's some of the beautiful is we still need to work out those details. Uh, but we would still need to put together a general rubric, rubric of what we are wanting to see to help us decide that.
And what's the incentives you're willing to offer? What's the budget?
Yeah.
In addition to that, you know, what other?
And I'd start small, so right now, if they want to do the outside, they don't want to put money on the inside. And then we may learn through this process that it's not economically viable for them to not get money for the inside. Okay, what's that mean for us? Are we wanting to add more to this or do we want to draw back from that same idea? We got to look at it. Really put it out there, but I'm not trying to say the little bit of that thing, but. Allow us to really represent the.
Now, I do think that they could tell me that, uh, depending on what, so they're going to answer the whatever numbers, like in that video, it's a numbers game. You know, how much do you, are you willing to invest? What's the, what's the return on that investment?
The other thing, it's nice about the idea of the RFP on pretty big, it's generally important, so it's issue of historic preservation. Whether or not, because that's a different set of construction drawings altogether. Pursuing historic designation, I think, so accurate to this matter.
Well, it will have your own part. Yeah, well, the, the idea of the historic preservation designation would not be to, to change anything. It, it would just mean that anything that would be attempted to be changed would have to be historically relevant or accurate. And, and it doesn't even boil down to wood replacing with wood only or metal, with metal only. Really, the idea that the center of interior standards are much more flexible than they used to be, understanding that many modern materials might do better than replacing wood windows with wood, wood, wood. Is it aluminum clad? Or some kind of vinyl that looks historic and it's all about the historic appearance, but yet it lasts longer.
But if you're trying to change the form plan, you're probably going to run into issues.
For historic preservation, it's all about exterior. But if you're trying to go for.
Do it exterior and exterior standards on the interior.
For, for tax credit.
That'll likely be unchanged, but I mean, maybe they will.
Right, but that's all, that's all up to the, the owner, the developer at that point, if they want to go for the tax credits.
A local board is all exterior, correct? But, yeah, if they're going with tax credits, state of federal.
So it's a lot for dessert that.
Yeah, it's, it's, most of the, most of the standards are, are about appearance. Maintaining materials when possible, but, but, uh, there's, there's a lot of leeway for going to other materials and other, um, types of things that maintaining that historic appearance is the, the utmost thing. I think we can do that. Rubric by filling out these, pretty much for the next maybe then. Moving to start telling, look at those. Yeah, the rubric. I, I don't know if you'll do that, but before you do the RFP, you're, or it waits to see what ideas come out and then develop or after that. But this is just an information gathering.
I would love, I would, why, just do it after. Do the rubric after? I think whoever submitted now, I think it would be, I think it would be good for them to know. Okay, Howard, what's the criteria? Now, we can be, we can be pretty vague with it. But there has to be something that you're determining.
And maybe I would say, we'll send out, because when there's some of the property, uh, there isn't specifically stated things in the retail and statutes, they consider it important to the property. Now, that said, there's like a little catchall against any other relative factors, you know? So like, there's still a lot of flexibility, but I mean, it's good to highlight the ones that are explicitly stated and certified.
So just to be clear, we're talking RFQ or RFP?
I think Todd said RFQ.
But Todd, you said that in regards to narrowing the field down to move further with an RFP.
Yeah, if you were concerned about like finding, finding the right developers to work with, I mean, I've really done my legwork in those two, I think, but you, you, the RFQ would allow you like pick, pick a pool that are on the same page, so to speak, before you can start.
But you're jacking correct, that's really not.
Yeah.
In the, in this.
Is that like a design bill?
It's the design bill, yeah.
And if we did.
Who do we do a design build?
I don't, unless they're willing to do the work and not own the building. You know? Because we can't sell to the builder, sell a building to them. You know what I mean? Like, to do it, it would be, it would be like a street, right? You do a design build for, I think that's a bad example, but.
We did design build.
For the fire station.
Well, we all, you know, people that submitted the most important qualifications.
You're paying a contractor for the work as the incentive, right? They're getting.
Yeah, that's a concept.
Whatever we're going to talk about here.
You don't end up.
We want the developer. Right, we need the developer, so. Does that make sense, Todd?
Yeah, I kind of see how it's different than the, uh, the fire station. I'm just, I, I just enjoyed the, how we, what we did in the fire station, how we went through that process and it was, uh, I think very.
Design build, if, for like, if we're doing the work. Right, like ultimately, we're doing the work, we're inviting people to the design building. And then once they do it, then we offer it up for sale. They can bitch for it like anybody else. Um, but we couldn't promise it to the design builder.
Well, I think that there, I mean, the distinction is the improvements to the facade, we could still do that in the process.
But that's a separate thing.
You're saying contractor and developer, there's.
Yeah.
Even less of a distinction.
So it's hard to.
I, I would say an RFP.
What we need to do.
They know, it's just like a information gatherer. It's, this is not a fee, but we're not awarding anything.
Yeah, it's unlike.
That's not what I heard.
Unlike, well, there, maybe, maybe, but for the most part, we're, you can see the background. To them, the fellow fourteen people. But you might, I mean, it is an RFP though, and I could decide to accept that.
No, you can't, unless we're actually selling building. And the two who were awarded it. If that makes sense. We could, I'm not, we, I just didn't see that that's what we were going. Is this, we're ready to sell the building?
I think, I think they go into, it's had a prior, I think, with the perfect partner.
Sell it.
And I think that if we come to find out that our proposal cannot be quite legal or look at the board, that we need to create like a back finer mission. But I don't think we go into that assumption.
So these, these people that are showing some interest, they're not. You have no idea if they want the whole thing or do they want it after we would, before we should be outside and have that done and there can be interior? Not the whole thing?
Right, I wish it would like the exterior, but like, let's see.
Right, so what's probably us doing outside, the developers does maybe, I don't know, I'm trying to go on the inside. And sell it and sell it to them.
The whole thing is in the, far upper alley.
No, generally, maybe if it's during the exterior, what if they want to do a hotel on the outside? They want to do a hotel upstairs, but we need to modify that front entrance in a way, or the backside entrance in a way related to our exterior. We don't want this all done and then learn we need to look three windows and a wall outside. Yeah, because we didn't think about it enough ahead of time.
The other side of that is if we're going historic preservation exterior, we want that facade changing at all anyway, no matter what they use.
Well, that's what I was.
So that's one thing I want to highlight. I don't know how much it's important to you guys, historic preservation commission or city happening. But if it's not a factor, then yeah, we can do it ourselves. But it's, it is.
Yeah.
Well, I, I think historic preservation would be on the same page with redevelopment commission in wanting to maintain the overall essence and historic look of the building, even if it's removing a window, putting in a door, removing a wall, putting in an entry. Historic preservation's goal would not be people as it is, it would be any changes are mindful to the historic nature of the building.
They just don't want to monitor, they don't want to monitor, they don't want you to step through the whole front and do the minor. I've learned that the hard way.
So the discussion with historic preservation that they have had has always been in mind with redevelopment's mission to change the building and be mindful to the historic nature of it. But yet recognize that changes will have to be made to the exterior to accommodate new function on the interior.
But I do think that RFP, we should be finding that developer that we feel comfortable moving forward with. And that ultimately they have possession of the building. But can we put parameters on there that, you know, we have to complete the exterior part of the wall before that transitions or? It's not just we, we reach an agreement and they have possession of it and then we're done. We have to, we have to make sure that our work, that we want to see on the building is done before we track our owners.
I mean, we could do it, I think we could structure it in a way where like we would do it in the context of like the due diligence period or we're under contract to sell the property. Um, but we don't close until we're done doing what we want, get ready.
Three and a half, while we work on that side.
Yeah, you could do it, I think you could potentially do it, or it would be, or an option contract where they would have the option to purchase. And we went through this, um, and while we still own it, we would have the ability to do it ourselves. Alternatively, we could sell it and, and as part of our incentives offered could be like a loan program where they can then do their work of themselves. And we have certain control over it, just like we would over the other loan projects. Um, and then we would also require our facade, you know, but we want to outline in that packet the incentives we offer. Um, other requirements, minimum investment by developer. Anything else, you know, will support you in your zoning reapplication. I don't know that anything like that will apply, um, but.
Go back to the point I was really about the interior, we still could be, we would still own the building. We would still own the building, okay. That's the key.
Well, we wouldn't, I don't know that we'd have to, if we just said, well, part of our incentive will be like our loan program up to a, at this amount.
Yeah, but we can't do much on the interior of the loan program, I mean.
Yeah.
Okay, cool.
Isn't, did we establish that with?
Yeah, I mean, we may, mainly all of us focus on the exterior, the side work. And while that's some.
Yeah, right.
Right, like elevator or anything like that.
I think this would be a little bit different because part of an incentive program is part of the scale of the building. Um, it's actually, it's all part of the package, if that makes sense. And we, we did the loan program to get around the easement issue, the, the public easement issue.
Right.
So it's like issuing a bond.
This would give us more flexibility doing it this way.
Yeah, and that would be a, that would be a more clean, you self billing to them and then they have all these things. Or we could, yeah, do the option contract side of things, which is a little more nebulous, but and then we would do the, the facade work while it's under contract, but not transferred. By.
And if we don't find anybody that we do, we can partner with, then we decide if we want to move forward with the exterior or do anything on the interior or something.
Or yeah, I guess similar to what we were originally going to do with Dietrich, with just the facade grants of easement. And even if we sell it, we have easement, we get to do the, in that easement, we reserve the right to do that work. We could extend that to the interior too, if there was something specific we could do. Um, but that, but then that sort of puts an easement on the interior of the building that creates some longer term restrictions or multiple payments for the. Challenge.
This is our, sorry, just send it to me too, by the way. Sadly, we dispatched rounds in RFP.
Hmm. I believe so, but I'm waiting for that. It's structured, hey, Brian?
Well, I would love to come in and have people just talk, you know, and, but I have a feeling we need something.
No, but what, from that can be, we just need to have an idea of what we're looking for.
Yeah.
That can be the RFP process, right? We can have them come in, pitch their idea to us, talk to them and what we're doing. While knowing that's a part of the RFP process, we have to have our rubric ahead of time. They would know what we're kind of looking for. But then again, that allows us to then, I mean, we can add generic ideas, and you can say uniqueness of idea. What you think's unique and what I think's unique is open ended. That's opinion.
So we use that conversation with them, then I have the rubric, and then send it out.
No, I have the rubric before.
Or I just send, then send out the, the actual RFP.
No.
That gives them.
That would be the RFP process, would be them coming in.
Then from there. But executives, so they're, so that they can.
I don't think the RFP process should be an executive session.
Um, to pitch their project?
For some of it could be, because you can do it as part of the economic development incentive and also the sale of real estate.
Okay.
You can have.
So good, keep it confidential.
All the submissions will be public record, the offering package will be public record. And you have to have a public meeting when you, you know, just, you know, discuss it, and then make the final action, but you want to do interviews and sort of try to hash out some details ahead of time.
Yeah, well, that would be.
Better to do it.
So that would be a good point at the beginning.
It could, it could be after issuing an RFP.
It could be after.
I don't know, I see this being a very short process, you know, necessarily.
Really?
Can we make a show?
Good.
Like, are we able to, was it, change, are we ready to go? So, so could we, so if this is not very new, can we do an executive session related around downtown incentive programs and the purchase of a property and bring these two people in to have a conversation with us?
Like before. I would want to double check, um, the statute to see how flexible that, that is, but potential.
Just purchasing real estate, that's part of the.
Purchasing, we're saying this one, or selling real estate is one of them.
Yeah, and this is potentially what we're actually talking about.
Yeah, right. Well, it's a nice idea, if we can do it. Well, well, oh, question about, uh, the rubric a little bit, we're talking about it, it's a, it's a fairly formal thing. The times that I've been involved in, and again, it's kind of the other end of looking at, uh, RFPs from redevelopment commissions. The rubric has been very general, in other words, somewhere in the proposal that says the project, the submittals will be judged on the merits of, maybe a half a dozen things, that are one sentence. Very general, and there's no scoring system, there's no, it'll tell you how much they cared on the first item versus the last item on any of those things, they just give it, you know, a few. Yes, so that the potential, uh, submitter knows, hey, you know, don't get way out of this box because you're going to be in trouble if you do. They honestly know how it's weighted or anything.
Right, right.
Yeah. I mean, is that acceptable, or is that the way that usually gets done?
What, what we've done for the fire station and for the, the golf course, there was a rubric that clearly stated what the criteria was, and then how many points were available.
Way to.
There was way to, right, so.
No, but that was, do we need to, much, and it's not much different, but still, Aiden, you have way harder, you have much more rules and things to buy by. For those processes of bidding out the building of those buildings where we wouldn't have related to those ideas, or no?
No, I don't, I mean, I, I think you could use the same criteria. I mean, the same.
I don't think you might have to be weighted in that way, though, or so clearly.
It wouldn't have to be, it wouldn't have to be, but I think with what we went through, I think when we can wait them, because whoever doesn't win is going to ask for, what was the scoring?
Yeah, for sure.
And I think the more we can explain what that process is that we're using to score it, the better off we'll be. What's nice is you take the aggregate of the scoring. No one has personally identified in what, what they scored each one. Um, but I think that's the, to me, that's the fairest way to do it. But, and waiting or not, I mean, we could just make all, there's five questions, you know, they're all equally weighted. But do we want to have more weight on?
It's going to be, local ownership is fifty-five to seventy percent of this building. We're going to buy this building.
Yeah.
To honestly let it go out in any way, shape or form, and I'm more than open with that with any public. Otherwise, why do we buy the building? So if you're not going to wait this thing to eighty percent local, or some huge skew, they're going to make an incredible proposal and opportunity outside of that, where it stays local, or why do we buy the building?
Uh, yeah, I mean, how do we, yeah, how do you value, you know, what, you know, how do we value?
That's a, that's a great example, but it's also a great example to the other side, too, because if someone becomes impotent to say, middle, or you have the greatest idea of all of it, and one is stuck.
Or Franklin, or some of these other towns that have really done
Yeah.
a great job, that we want to rule that out.
Yeah, but I, I mean, totally agree. Most likely, that's going to be a very, very important, we may find out. Slight possibility is, well, what we found out in our first option was, we did do a good job. And we don't like when we came up with it, and we have it.
Exactly.
And we can, so. To start off, we guess it's a huge portion of where we need it. And so it's going to be probably over the skew in this way until we learn, oh, we missed some opportunities because of the short sighted, we thought about. We didn't know. And it's trapped, but that wasn't our intent out of the gate to do that. If we learned. That makes sense. Uh, that's all I would really plan is, Lawrence. Yeah, we should start after it was signed. Yeah, we should.
Jack, can you do say something?
I am a little worried about how much we can really weigh for local, sure, or others.
I'm not sure. I, I think if you could, you know, do some research on what we're talking about here, if we're at Tuesday, and if, if we think about what, what are the categories we want to do that way? What are those, what are those criteria that we're using? And then we can talk Tuesday about how we weigh it, if we can't weigh it. We can. I know Todd's put a couple of these together.
I was going to say, do we have something tied to look at for?
Is this, was this, uh, questionnaire kind of meant to get some of those criteria, or?
Yeah, it's just a chance for redevelopment, individually, you can prioritize what's important about the building, and then we can create the rubric and the questions and how it's weighted. But I think this gives you a cha, and I threw down some things where it's easy, so you're, you know, do you like it? Mostly, or, or you rank the order of it, um, but there's also a blank space if you want to fill in, like, what, what's important, what's your objective? So that I think everyone's voices get heard. Um, you know, we, before we start this RF, RFP project, so that's, that's the purpose of this kind of, you know, prioritization survey, to get your, get your feedback.
So it'd be helpful for them to fill this out before they leave tonight, or get a Tuesday tomorrow. And then you, you could draft something out and have something that you guys can evaluate and say, like, we could now start over?
I think an executive session. Especially sale real estate, or, or commercial industrial developer. Don't worry.
Well. Just so like, we could send all of those, this, this down. I know we could just, or, I don't know. Yeah, I mean, girl.
No, I think.
I was saying, for viewers, potentially outside of.
Todd, if you got these by the end of the week, that'd give you enough time before Tuesday to put something together.
Yeah, I think that's fine, yeah.
Is that, is it ready to roll? Well, it's like, filling out this, uh, survey, and then Todd can put the draft, ask the public. First draft of the RFP. But really, we don't get, we will not get the session through until the end of September. Yeah, seven, you know, until it will, it happens already.
Yeah.
To go, that once we have, we're going to close on a building, uh, to go now, immediately, if we're ready to.
So some things that the redevelopment statute specifically out state are things that you can consider. Our size and character of the improvements, the most, um, the bidder's plan, and they were the, to improve the real property with reasonable progress, so there's a couple, you know, to suit their timeline and also qualification, qualification aspect. Uh, whether the real property want to prove, will get sold or rented. The bidder's proposed sale or rent crisis. So if they have a, we're saying, we're going to rent some of our commercial businesses, what's your target, the structural amount? Uh, for, for residential, maybe from the name first, it should be lower, or maybe you want to say, well, we want high standards. I grant, um. The bidder's. And then any, any other factors that will assure the commission that the sale or lease is made goes where they're executing. That survey, so there's. Size and character. Ability, promise. Have we weighed anything on their potential budget that they're willing to put into the project, obviously. Probably the size and character. What was the last one, yeah? The catchout one?
Yeah.
Any factors that will assure the commission that the sale or lease is made for further the execution of the economic development. That's it, just a, we just have to, just a, stand on both human and. There's a very broad, personal, something that's very important, so just don't consider the welfare before I. Okay.
Hope we feel like we've drafted this card before we, this week, not Tuesday. Welcome to other projects.
So there's one is the, supposed to sign up to come in, uh, for you guys to, out of, think of the E P K projects. Uh, what, uh, we can see downtown, or what for you guys, or what we know for downtown, uh, what you guys would like to list, go have a supply room. Or, assuming your guys' priorities are social, and then, uh, what you may think, it's about the cost estimate range. Uploads, so that way, if the project does arise, we know where everybody stands on what the value of that project is.
You're asking us to give you the explanation for that?
I'm asking what you think, what your idea, I mean, that's.
I think, I just want to be a two. I mean, I don't know, what's, what's your idea for the cost of being? So I mean, maybe. Basically, this is what you would like to assess. Well, that's hard, like, how long is it cost to redo those hours? I mean, I know we know, have one idea going, but like, that's really hard for, I mean, that's not furniture retail, that's nothing.
No, just, just a ballpark, what you think, or what, what you think you'd like to best, I mean. Let's start, let's start just on the projects first.
I don't want to scare my guests. Yeah, so, I don't know, I mean, does it make sense to just sort of go around and hear, and maybe capture some of the?
Um, yeah, so I have, I have the rubrics here to, for us to look at, um. But yeah, I guess, uh, let's, let's go around here. Um, Jane was, was gracious, something, and it was important to help inspire this meeting.
Yeah.
So, going from that, would that be okay, anything strike?
That's fine, I, you know.
Um, and the list you gave me, is that specific of what you're?
You know, those were the things that, the, um, okay, I started off with running Nipco Utilities out to airport. I mean, there's our tip.
That's a hard one, so what are we willing to do?
We need to find out the cost, what Nipco is going to.
And we are, well, no, we're, we're, we met with Nipco at the end of May. And they were going to, because ask specifically, what's it going to take us to get enough gas out there? The survey, they were going to work with engineers to get numbers back to us. I just got a call from Nipco yesterday, we didn't, we weren't able to connect, but hopefully I'll have those numbers soon, hopefully by Tuesday. I don't have that, I think the initial number was eighty-eight, yeah, eighty-nine hundred thousand. A million, yeah, to get, and that's taking gas from County Road Seven, no, County Road Nine, out to the airport. And then from County Road Eleven, south of the tracks, up to it, so they're, they're bringing two lines together to get enough gas, so.
Gas, so we're talking.
Natural gas.
That's what I need. Yeah.
Because Rod Veer built a building out there, they wanted two hundred thousand dollars to connect gas to that building.
Oh, gosh.
And, and, yeah, in the report, in the report that Baker Tilly gave to us, you guys saw what the increase was in the airport. You've got room for more development out there. Um, so that, yeah, so let me get the numbers for that, but yeah, okay.
I just don't like that.
Now, now, given, I know, that, that million, like, we're good out there.
Well, that's what we need to.
Right, I mean, yeah, I want to come back in five years.
Oh, yeah, we need.
Nipco can't speculate, but we can, I mean, we can give them numbers on what we think the industry is going to be out there, right? Now, if you get somebody who needs, needs a lot of gas, like Rod just needs heating and cooling.
He wasn't even running major stuff.
So if you get a large user, they can, they can.
They manipulate those.
What do they call that? Um, they get that money over time, it's like a rate structure.
They're willing to.
That's, yeah, and they get paid over time, Nipco does.
Yeah.
So, yeah, but this, I was not aware that north and east of the airport has no natural gas at all.
That's what I, I feel like, I know it's not fancy.
Right, we took water too out there, but I don't know that anyone realized that there wasn't a gas out there.
Yeah.
And water, and that water is sort of a little adequate out there.
Yeah, yeah, in fact, we need to have, we'd like to have more water usage out there because of tower and transferring that.
But if we can add some more business out there as we.
And, you know, learn all its properties just to the south of there, there's potential there that that could.
Be developed.
Yeah.
So that's why I put that, you know.
Right.
That's not my thing, but yeah, my, that's my thing.
Yeah, we're, real quick, were your ideas listed as preference on that or just?
I, you know, that to me was my preference was Nipco. Now, the rest of them, I was just zinging off.
Sure.
Um, things. Number two for me would be De- uh, Detra. I mean, that to me is. It's always been me too. Um. And then, um, the Pavilion Plaza, um. And. Obviously, the, um.
We're just wanting to get a little more area in the park area.
The streetscapes for downtown.
That's one of the only remaining buildings. Not that house.
That pops players today. So I think we're.
Right, the business.
Um. And then, you know, some of these were in relationship to the Pavilion Plaza, you know? Getting the remaining, um, buildings for us to. Do the plaza, getting, you know, the amount of money to tear the buildings down and get everything cleared to start the project. Um. Then I also mentioned, um. The Depot Plaza, you know, we've talked about that. And then. We've, we've had a couple of people in town that for a while have needed some help with their buildings. I don't know if that's still. Anything, you know, Jerry Clouds and.
I think that one is to be honest with that. Your relatives would, we look at that, there's more brick falling off.
Is that the Renees? Yeah. I have that on my list.
I, I rushed our nephew and my son to that area. Just like, just guys could go.
So I have that on the list and I don't know where Reliance is because I, you know, there's all different things going on there. So anyway, that was. Um. Towards the, the top. And then, then I just listed that there are also projects that could fall into our laps that we haven't even, you know. Perceived, um, Country Plaza, Georgia Service Station, um.
Country Center.
Country Center.
Yeah.
It's going to be a project.
Yeah. Um, and then we've got, you know, Craig Benau, he's been in our past. Um, the Clip Building has been in our past. Um, the building directly south of the theater on the alley, you know, that one is yucky. The V F W building, his and her building. I know that's Fran. She's going to have to die before we, but you know, it could happen tomorrow. Yeah, she's in there. So those are the projects that, that.
Empty lot of Johns.
Oh, gosh.
I think you could pretty much say.
That whole quadrant there.
Yeah, from, from the V F W north. The theaters are okay, but essentially, if you could redevelop that lot.
The theaters, I guess, they're doing something fifteen, probably. I talked with them already, so I think we're on our path for that.
The theater? Like all black letters instead of red?
And also their, uh, lights. Their lights don't work right now on the sign. So they need to get replacements for lights. I'm talking about that and then, uh, ones from the regular event. That's like a very good, very bad, probably a good half hour after the movie the other night.
So that's what I looked through.
Thank you.
All right.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, the new Beesel.
Yeah.
You sure? Okay, um. The Walnut Street, Ace to Martin's, the paving is spruce up. I don't know where, these are not in the order. This was just my vision. Remember, I don't, I've only been on it.
That, we are working on that, um. As we speak, the Walnut Street, the Family Fair Drive, um, we have, um.
Not all the way to Martins.
Not all the way to Martins. I, I tried to go down that route and Martins did not want to participate either. Um, tractor supply anywhere in that building, focus.
Well, then start cleaning up there.
Well, I think, yeah, that, I think once they see what we do here, and we're going to try to get that with community crossings, which will be a eighty twenty match. I think right now we're looking about eight hundred thousand for the, that work. Um, because that's a complete reconstruction. Um, those will know probably. Later this fall, that if it's a twenty percent match on six hundred thousand or a hundred and twenty thousand.
Nice.
So we'll try to deal with it can to minimize, minimize those costs. But that, that is in the works. Um, both Ace and, uh, East Lake Fitness, they've agreed to.
Give it to.
Give it to us. Yeah.
Please, that's a help. They should pay us and take it. They don't want to keep it up. They don't want to maintain it and they're not. I mean, I mean, it cost me to maintain my parking lot. That's their parking lot probably. So yes, I mean, we can take it, but let's, let's, let's not pretend like that's not a huge gift to take that off.
Right, right.
Yeah.
That's, I mean, I'm glad they're on board, but yeah, they can each give us.
I mean, I'm, I'm still open to, you know, talking to the new owners of Martins, Martin Nash. But, you know, to me, that, that ship is somewhat a sale, but.
But you still have to get the middle of it.
Yeah.
I mean, even if Martin Nash were on board, and I don't think you have to get the middle of it, other than what we had.
Right. And I thought we offered Martin's a pretty sweet.
Oh, they had a huge.
Yeah.
We, we were going to repay and re-strike their parking lot, but they would lose too many parking spots by putting a road through there. Yep. Oh, that's good, huh?
Okay, um, finishing up the lot across from the vet's office. What are we doing with that, with the lot?
Oh, the building we tore down. The house we just.
Yeah, I think that's part of the whole downtown master plan.
Okay, that's part of my, I heard that. Um, the Detra Building, which I love, um, V F W Fran, that was one of my, on my list, the Clip Auto. Um. Market Street Auto Junior is getting ready to retire this year. I don't know what the situation.
Jenny Templeton asked me, could Benny also, um, ask me if we would be interested in. That's one thing. Is it, is it on or in recording?
Clips?
Or not?
No, Market Street.
Market Street Auto. Do we want that corner or do we want to? We let that sell and.
I said the T, right?
Well, it's not going to go, it's not itself. It's going to go to another auto. There's somebody that wants to go in there.
Oh, and see, that's, that's why I guess, do we want that to continue to use as that or do we?
Because they're using our Pavilion for their leftover cars. See, that's what, that, I, I just feel like whoever buys that has to know that that Pavilion will not be used. Except for entertainment activities, whatever. We have somehow need to shut that down because that's how we think of it as, well, I.
It's parks.
Well, then, yeah, we.
Yeah, and it's made parks for cars.
No, James saying we stop making that a parking lot. That's it all. We don't want a parking.
Right. That, this is part of our. Yeah, this is our plaza and this is what we, this is our vision, that all of our entertainment activities is, is. Yeah, I, I don't think we could ever, ever get anything moving with this area as long as it is viewed as a park.
Right, it is on our list.
What does that mean?
All right, I mean, so goodbye.
The acquisition list is a rough list. They could progress and be interested in that for us to discuss. And then it's a publicly. Yeah, it's very.
Are they all?
Yeah. Here.
So it has the environment.
Get by the sound of it. It's really easy to have two bands.
Cause I was keeping the handle.
Yeah.
How you, that was the Mark, Market Street Auto. Then I had photo, the photo studio down there and the tiger. Yes, that's the one I. It's upstairs, it's in, I mean, their windows are broken. There's stuff.
Right, that's the theater. Oh, yeah.
Um.
They got interested in it. Looking at it last year.
They've now covered everything over, made it like a house. I don't know if somebody's living in it or what's happening now.
Oh, in the, in the front area, I was making the building.
I, I, I didn't know what was going on up there. Yeah, what's going on in the downstairs?
Still, it's a different. South of the theater.
Yeah, because they've now got just cheers in it instead of being a. There's definitely says, maybe students or hours or. Um, one twelve East Market, the alley. I was going to say, um, it just needs to be cleaned up. One twelve. That's.
Next harvest is.
Yes, and, um.
The field dog, really? Yes. And we've had a conversation with the park, so I'm, there's a, that full lot.
Right, yes. We're going to call that the Modernist Allen. But, yeah, I mean, we can, we're just.
And to let you know too, new attitude, someone across the street has applied, uh, where if people improve it, uh, way to put the W nine in that contractor, it's still available.
Very, what's that shit?
And we will be in the new cover. Where on the side of the building? We might like it, but now that's. They got a market for it.
Um, I had a big question mark with America's Legion. I know their, their numbers are going down. I mean, I feel bad for them. I don't, they want that big new building.
I think if we could find around. Space or local or something, it's just the biggest issue there is accessibility.
Right.
If they have their ability to bank a hall or a bar area.
Fifty three, yeah.
Yeah.
A pop a door, whatever, whatever it's called, we call it the depot. Um, I know that they're using it for a food pantry. Is that, is that what we do? With the city of, yeah, for nature. Well, and the other thing is parking lot, that parking lot. Yes, that's, that's what I was saying. Okay, depot plaza. I got mixed sense. Um. One of the other things before, the warehouses on Madison, what is, what if we consider doing, a lot of times we have, like, we changed ours to vintage use.
Right, um, country wood, all of the buildings on the east side of Madison. I think their intent is to take those down eventually.
Wow. But my question is, doesn't it have a.
No, I'm sad about that, Leah.
Now, beers, beer and flavor are, if you're a damn fan of, so a whole bunch will know it on the west side.
The one that has the Vesine across, two different people owning with the Vesine across?
Yes, I remember the owner.
What are they going to do with some crap?
Yeah, I mean.
It's a housing pit, like another denser and. Always thinking like, I'm going to move it over for what we say it.
That's a horrible.
That is rough.
That's why we consider compromise.
See how, see how good you can go with insulated.
Window, windows, yeah.
We give you a private track. Uh, nobody mentioned that on our.
No, I don't know anything about that. One fifty six, one fifty eight West Lincoln, purchase for our master plan status.
Six one.
One. One fifty six West.
Oh, that's the.
Fifty six, fifty eight West Lincoln.
Fifty, one fifty two is what we tore down.
Yeah, one fifty two, so one, yeah, so yeah, that's. Yeah. Protection with that.
Hundred and six year old.
Oh, wait, is it Link?
What was her name? Yeah, you guys can always play. There was, um.
La.
La.
That's your boss.
Yeah, she was. Fifty six, fifty eight West Lincoln. Okay. Yeah, they look, they have two numbers on it though.
Yeah, one's one.
Okay. Um, two fifty two West Mullins, the Mullins. We are.
Yeah, that's the, yeah, that.
Okay.
No, we don't have that one.
We want that one.
Well, that's the other block on this block we don't have.
That's talks.
I, I talked with Larry today on that. He's bringing us it out there.
Two or five South Napany on the tracks near the police station.
Oh, we'll see. There's probably a petition.
Yes, that one, um, was, uh, that's, shoot, what, Henry?
Yeah, Henry, we had the approval to get the approvals on that.
Yeah, I think once, yeah, since once the, um, fire station is down, we will need house on four and nine. I prefer that in the, or Barney.
You know, Todd has a great idea of having all of those, hope that we do part of thing along the traffic square.
Right, right. I mean, it's really, uh. Yeah.
Yeah, no, that's a brilliant thing, especially if we do anything here for the plaza area, really.
Okay, and then I know that we got them to this house. Now, my main block, um, with the seed garden, that whole block with the seed garden, there's four houses. But can we consume when we're parking? Yeah.
Um.
I know one of them went on, I know one of them went on the market. Uh-oh. You're laughing at me.
Yeah, the one, which out by owner?
Oh, no, 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 oh, no. I've already, I've already.
You're talking about one on Centennial.
I got to put that on the T-shirt for that.
So Centennial Street, that one, Scott had it, Scott had it on, yeah, Scott had it on the market.
Seven twenty five.
What?
Yeah.
Oh, wow. Seven twenty five?
No, 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 on seven twenty five.
I know.
But I think until we have a plan for that, I don't, I mean, if, if it came available, I don't think we were ready to.
Okay. Well, the other reason I was saying that is because if we look at what there is parking lots, there's only four houses right now. There's only four houses.
Yeah.
For, to take that whole block from parking.
Yeah.
And we're not talking about.
That'd be two biases, the one on the corner.
Two fifty one, two fifty, two fifty one, um, main, which we know about.
Yeah.
Two fifty two, New York Elm.
Yeah.
Um, one oh seven East Centennial and one fifty three East Centennial. Those are the four that I came up with that were on that block.
Okay.
That whole block, there was only four houses. The whole entire block.
Yeah.
I guess there's more information on it, but I thought it was for sale recently. I thought Scott said it sold it. Said, it says it's sold since seven thirty five.
Seven twenty, you were there seven.
That's funny, the sale price is, is it sold or?
Yeah.
Probably not once again.
Well, no, it says it sold on July twenty fifth.
Right.
Sale price is zero.
No, they withdrew it.
No, that means warranty deed.
Oh, okay. Wow.
So, um. Usually that would be just closed type.
But that was just, that was the last.
So that block, that northeast block or two hundred block of North Main Street.
Yes.
What about the block in the house?
Yeah, and I think the block, at least the Georges and, uh. What was, uh, one of the trailers?
Yeah, that you can't see because it's, uh. So there's two there.
I need on my Google call so I can still just be part of one.
Yeah.
And it's still going.
You should be able to get into the counter and talk about.
Meeting again tomorrow morning.
And then I, my last part, I know I've kind of gone long-winded, but I, it was called nifty. I said Five Diamonds, a Barber Sharp, V F W, one twelve East Market, the Photo Studio, John's Fisher Shop, Reliance Buildings and Renee's Wall, is what I came up with those. That was my list. That's all I've got.
So those were, those were nifty?
Well, that's what I thought of. Those would be better as nifty things. Let's improve their.
Spend a little bit to fix them up.
Yes.
The nifty programs, uh, up as ten thousand.
Yeah.
Max diet.
More feedback. Um.
That was just my thoughts. I mean, I wasn't saying, you know, I was just saying help improve the look of it. Because look at the four corners. I kind of.
You say Five Diamonds?
Yes.
Yeah, uh, currently I'm working with Brett on that, um, ever since, uh, it's kind of our policy. Uh, we're still working on it. We have the designs and everything.
Yeah.
Um, I think we were just trying to finalize who was working on it.
Brad did design on that lot.
Which one?
Uh.
No, we had the new designs, really, and we're looking for like.
Yeah. Yeah. We were working on the door, because it's want to close the door off the door, so that was back in February.
Yeah, we're not close to the part of what?
Not have a full open door, so we were trying to see what. We could look for a glass.
At the time, he thought that his wife may move across the street at the studio or in there, and he might be prepared for that, and so. The design was kind of like that. Maybe.
Same barber shop, they were interested in doing something earlier this year, but they just haven't bought it. Thank you, Nancy.
That was my first try.
I think my main thing, we may have covered a ton of the stuff, um. I want to keep up our downtown additional grants and facade, we, yeah, we came into that in the last couple of years. That's Nancy nailed it, the nifty stuff, but I want to make sure we're, have thought through and are allocating, um. And I know we got a lot to talk about with the, the, the. Forgivable loan stuff, I, I, I mean, I, I have no taste to do million dollar things again at all. And so, but that's gonna have to be worked through and restructured and talked about. Um, that's still gonna be a huge portion of our budget of things if we're actually serious about continuing using that downtown and around. And so, um, to not be allocating between a hundred to three hundred thousand dollars probably a year for what that could potentially be over the next ten, I think, uh, we, we have to begin to assess that. Um, and then I think also is just future if development and processes, like we're gonna have to set aside a couple hundred thousand dollars a year in the precipitation of a million or some type of numbers to develop those over the next ten years or.
But, but you guys do have on, I mean, the way the bus and bus were normally set up, that was a loan, that was a bond. And redevelopment did.
Yep.
And then the tip paid for that bond.
Yep.
And then once that bond was paid off, that's what, that's what's allowing you guys to kind of do what you're doing. So.
And we re-upped bus a couple times because, now can we still re, because typically we establish a tip area, it's twenty years.
The one that the boss set up was thirty years at the time. They keep changing the.
I know, they change, but now it's like twenty years. On a tip area that we even establish and develop, or that's.
Twenty five, twenty, twenty, twenty five is the maximum, I think.
And residential's different.
Resi, yeah.
Yeah, that'll change in like a year, it's actually changed.
But those were.
It's like built in and then.
Talking on here, and those were two of my main, yeah, not discussing, that I don't know how to allocate in the capital balance for. But not to say that it's probably, in my mind, that's probably five to ten percent of our budget annually. That needs to be thought of, of what future development and what I, what I would say is sustainability of TIF.
Mm-hmm.
Without having to do loans or, or bonds.
Mm-hmm.
To pay for us to exist. Uh, now, maybe not, maybe we, we just have to do bonds to do it and see if they're worth it or not. Um, but, yeah, those are kind of my. And I think should be on there.
Yeah.
Thanks, Paige, I need to get you some questions.
For the. The, um, what's the. Steve House.
Hmm.
That, that one was getting hit hard.
Yes.
Is, was there bond finance there or?
Um, yeah.
Set aside just for.
Is that main street, are you gonna talk about?
No, it's a heritage bond, heritage, heritage.
Oh, Heritage House, okay.
Um. I can't, I can't remember what we did on that. Did we provide? Did we provide water and sewer or the streets? We provided one or the other to that. Because that's how that tip was set up, but we couldn't, we couldn't capture anything on residential, but we captured Engle Myers and Heritage House.
Yeah, oh, that's what, you did it as a bond or you, what did you do?
I think they put in the, the infrastructure, the city, did the, the utilities. And then didn't care and slave all do all the.
Roads and.
Yeah.
Excavation.
We're talking two Heritage Houses?
That, that whole area is a tip.
Okay, where Engle Meyer is, behind him, okay.
And I think that was. Was it Martin's included in that? It's a two thousand and seven tip. It went down off one. It went down off one. From Martin's.
It says that senior housing wasn't created in two thousand and one.
So you're talking about those duplexes that are behind.
That, no, this would be the Heritage House.
Just the house.
But that, that multi, the multifamily housing for.
Those duplexes.
It's in, it's in the two percent cap.
Okay.
And with the new tax laws, they're giving them the deduction of up to a third of the value. In deductions. So that's gonna not make as much money for us as.
Is it gonna go negative alone of what the basis was?
But that's the, that, that area with those back there are. You're saying.
Those are not revenue generating.
That's what I wanted to know.
But that's twenty thirty one when it expires.
Is that, um, is that a over fifty five area or something? No?
The big building, Heritage House is.
Right, it is that, right. And not the homes back there.
There's a seller.
I think they may have started out with some of those units, fifty five and over, but I don't think that's. If they should.
So twenty thirty one.
Twenty thirty one, that one goes up, yeah, created in two thousand and one. By twenty thirty one, it's projected. Probably over fifty five more. All right, now we're at the one ninety one. Turn ninety one down.
Five.
Did we?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so thank you for the, for your, really big stuff, so, um. I think it all, they're saying it, um, for me, it's, uh. Probably my biggest priority is still downtown, that's what made here, it's what got me involved in it in the first place, and. Honestly, when I became a part of the redevelopment commission, prior to that, I was sort of like a volunteer for the redevelopment commission. And I heard that, where we just do, and I, I was so heartbroken because one of the first projects I worked on was John's Fisher Shop that burned, you know, the original, of the building there.
Huge fire downtown.
Yeah, it's Gravers were in that time.
Gravers, yeah. And so, but anyway, I mean, that's what drew me to, you know, I guess public service in general was trying to make a difference to downtown happening, so. Um, I haven't really changed on that, um, I think there are a lot of other projects that are good and worthwhile that are not in the downtown, there's no question about that. I think that I would be reluctant to step over something downtown very quickly to get to something that's not downtown. Doesn't mean we have to step over something downtown, get things that aren't downtown, you know, certainly could fall within a lot of cases. But, um. If it meant stepping over something downtown, I wouldn't be reluctant to do so, the worst word. I think that, and obviously that comes back to Detroit, it was a huge, you know, um, part of that. Um, I think that, that be having a successful project, which we will with the Detroit building. Um, is among others a tone setter for the downtown and creates an environment that, um, in some ways is, becomes increasingly difficult for someone to better. Um, and what I mean by that is that right now, it's, uh, sort of okay for, um. Business downtowns not having greater risk of disaster or not, like the improvement to that aside, but we'd like to see it's.
Okay. What they did makes it look rather than. And we, uh, I think that having a good statement to it. Um, but at least which very important part of our story, you know, this can don't be a problem with it. That's a big thing, um, so. Well, they, they, uh, they're gonna see some nice improvements to the coffee shop, half full, all of their own shit that consumed. Um, and we'll have to enter into that, but a couple of people that see that he, what, 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 uh, that he's just done in that corner is spectacular. Um, what we're gonna do for the Detroit, spectacular, but. Once that gets set in place, I think that some of the secondary facade, um, will, it will help me any on, on some of their, what they did. Um, but that, and they could increase a little bit, but, 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 I think, stops like that. So, what a story, um. Part of that, uh, so a couple of things that kind of along with that, we want to, it's still interested in where we might go with design guidelines for the downtown area, so that's a book in progress. Yeah, right, so, um, I think that there, in, in that, you know, measure, because I, I sort of wear both pants here, as an architect, I don't, you know, like being too constrained. But it's only because I know that I'm gonna probably do what's right, the next guy might not. So I just want to be careful about that too, but I do, do think there needs to be something, somewhere that we can, to some extent, mitigate that architecture. For this one.
That, yeah. I see the whole, I think, doing the, uh. The four block here, that would be specifically. Um, the rules for different stuff there, we would like that, rather than.
That's a greater standard.
So you don't have. Which is what.
You wanted to.
Yes, yeah.
No question. So, I mean, the, the only other thing just to, to know here is, um, I think we are doing good work with the P A, I think that's great, up at that end is awesome. I mean, there isn't that, they're probably a whole bunch of like, so that's all really good. Uh, trying to find, to encourage people to take advantage of that, maybe it's funny, it's just stored in there, so they can really do a great job with that. Um, the other part of that is, can we have an idea of what I think, like, I'm gonna get. Great, good conversation, start that. Um, you know, selling, that's great, I got, yeah, yeah. Just wouldn't want to take mine off when I go over, I want to, um, do I have three quarters that are pretty impressive? There's a, we've got dollars of the thing. This week, I'm sitting, um, and that's national top is, is thought of, okay. Um, you know, if we can partner with that partnership in any way. Um, or to, uh, dig that. If we support it, it's here, here, it's that, or somebody. There's something to be thinking about, um, so I'm, okay, so that's my long winded, uh, talk about the downtown. Um, other things, can you absolutely write it, maybe, if you, if you planted seats now, that will grow, they could, um, come out of here, for absolutely, particularly the back. Um, is there anything still that's lingering, if I are high on regarding, kind of said that, hopefully, yes, those developments out there. But still, as we, Jackson Street, getting Jackson Street punched through, but then. That's all sides of water, sewer coming around, thirteen fifty, I'm too, kind of seven, but beers on that, beers and, so we'll cycle off, all the, uh, beer. So they own that parcel, they're ready to, yeah, we can go and, we want to go, yeah, better, it's out, yeah, fair amount, so better as we listed. Yeah, listed, city water, city water, municipal water, sewer. Yeah. They're listed with, they're the sale. So, um, potential, or, sure, we can capture, I would assume that it's, it's, okay, there's a, okay, yeah, I think drawn forward just to, like, for basis. I, I don't think, I think we're kind of blocked, um, Ola owns the property, lots of, lots of industrial property, and how that is, that desire to develop that. More industrial, you just, kind of, we'll talk for, for this future, uh. Oh, should, should it become industrial? Is, is there, we're, we would have infrastructure to that point, disappointing, yeah, so it's not like we need to upsize and just keep carrying forward. Right. We've had discussions for Saturday, I know we got here, I say it for those promising. With, uh, the beer, the, um, the fair amount, our, our next. Project four. I'll, I'll, yeah. And then just two other things, there's more questions to be, um, I'm a shaker, it's obviously, so I'll speak, I have not heard. What just, has, has anybody heard, they purchased it? Can anybody say that it's good or what's happened there? We can. It's, it's alive, so I'm, I'm watching for the activation and I'm. Okay, I understand that, yeah, I understand that. Um, just curious if there was any, anything you'd be aware of as we talk. At this point, no, at this point, no, I, that's one of the biggest things that I would have been served out is, you know, what is that? Yeah. But having successful, you know, like, so. Yeah, it's gonna be causing usually. Well, and the reason for my question, obviously, is having a successful, um, driving, whatever, it's gonna be down there, if it need a lot break. Happening, it could be that, we may want to take a little bit of looks or something there, it's gonna be a little bit more. Well. And. So the only kind of thing we had talked about a little bit, and, you know, all these comments about, you know, the flats and things like that, and absolutely, we need to keep our, we had talked about some developmental plots. Um, along there as well, is, anything look forward on that? Do you know that we've been had a.
Development process?
Yeah. Uh, over, uh, on the other side of the plaza, or we talked about maybe on the first side of plaza, so, you know, like, hard on calculating, or.
Like new, new development, new.
Yeah.
I think we're open to that, we have anyone.
That many, I haven't had any, actually, since the. Again, just curious, you know, who these, these stations or anything like that, if they're not to the hype of that.
I, I think the sooner we can create a vision for that area.
We can show someone, say, maybe this is.
This is what we'd like to see.
In order to prove this, maybe, here, if we try to, for sure, yeah. In some ways, it's a little bit of a catch point too, you know, we'd like, let's out there for. Oh, yeah. To help us.
This would be also, if we create a plaza, then. And if the buildings start to around and create the streets, get Harvard Park, yeah, like, is that ourselves, or what's happening, like, this is all other.
Yes, master plan.
Right, I think to know if there's some interest to anybody, because there is, it turns out, I'd like to come to them once we are more serious on it. I think the, the purpose now, actually having this fire would be to level it. But also that just, that somehow has got to move it, get them out of there, yeah, that's it, yeah. So again, I mean, I think this is a, this is great group, great body, and, uh, we can do a lot of things at the same time, you know, a lot of things go off, and a lot of actually fire, and I'm. She, I think, you know, one thing you could kind of list was the other line of use.
I can, I have the two.
Yeah, property acquisition and demo. Um, I do know if we do them all at the same time, it, it is a even better deal for us.
So it'd be like, one, two.
Four. Next, three hundred, more. Flares, uh, uh, chokis. You have to take a miller, miller. Yeah. Probably also, just you will get, um. Or some parking lots. Make sure that those are being transferred to the Charlie and Fort Century Lake. Right, before we do anything. So Brian, how early do I feel with that one? So there's still label Century Lake?
Which block is?
Right here.
The one behind the building is considered Century?
We paid that, they didn't say anything.
Blah, 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 blah.
No, that's when I first realized that it was Century.
Not true.
We got approval for something, but. That was an old. Yes, it's this one? Was it Dick Fletcher, Jerry Rumpel deal?
I don't know. Century, yeah.
There was United Telephone, yeah.
Both Century Land.
Yeah, and somehow it didn't get transferred. Geez, so silly. I know we've been in touch with there, I'll, I'll bring that up for you.
So what's next? What's going on with the East?
The what?
So they have, um, there's been a. What did Brian call it?
Oh, Garrett, oh, yes. I didn't know that was his last name, I just knew Gary.
So anyway, there's a court hearing scheduled for October seventeenth, and I think, um, he's got thirty days, I think, what did Brian say?
October seventeenth.
No, but. But when is, when is the letter going out?
Next week. You expect that they should receive it, thank you.
Yes.
They're gonna receive it next week, they have thirty days to object.
Oh, you like appraisal?
No, no, this is.
Notification.
Yeah, notification, they have thirty days to respond, um, if they have no objections, we can move to cancel the, the hearing and go straight to, um.
Getting three.
Three appraisals, pointing to three appraisers and.
And then they'll have one price to fail.
No, in the meantime, he's trying to sell it, so I don't think so, for sale by August. I heard, I heard he wants between seventy and ninety thousand.
Eighty thousand, just what I knew that.
Oh, you, you called her?
I had a Florida phone number, so she answered on the first round.
Uh huh.
And had a nice discussion with me.
Yeah.
Okay, so since this is, um, live, what's in, at the time that we're at right now, um. Do we want to rank these, skip the pricing? Um, and I can figure those out for us then, to see what, something like this could cost, one of the committees have had that similar to it. Um, but do we want to start ranking or a timeline, thinking of what, what those can be? So the E-trip probably absolutely is up there.
Yeah, as, as priority, you know.
Yes.
You know.
Yes.
Within the next year. One over here. From now.
Yeah.
Now till September. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Jackson Street still, Jackson Street still, and we may have some potential stuff with Jackson Street too, on the wall, so it's nice. With the wall, and so. So the E-trip, Jackson.
Um, do you want to just make a list of all the projects and then?
I think we're all similar.
Or, I mean, I'm, I'm fine, but.
Because, I mean, I've talked with J D O, and I mean, I know you've expressed that there's some downtown street space, like you see the bricks are going, are going away in formation. Um, trees are dying, so I don't know what our, what our steps are on that, because the plaza can be utilized as something as a incentive for a developer back here for anything too. So, you know, what, what's our, I'm trying to tackle that, or do we do that in case it could be our. Probably not doing anything until it'd be like a match for a project.
Hmm. Do you want to write them down and then we'll just do them on Tuesday, give, put them in order?
Yeah.
I think that would be better, because we've all.
Yeah, I think it'd be ready to get a formal, kind of, you know, a few that are at the top and the rest. So we're going to be on kind of the. You could probably send the list out, you know, tomorrow or Friday, and then we could start ranking them.
Yeah, sounds good, we do have that. Thanks, yeah. Must there's any other products you guys think of, anything to?
You're going to find out cost, for that stuff, Brian.
Yes, yeah.
It's not fancy, but needed.
Full smell. Full smell.
Natural gas isn't smelling, really.
They add, they add.
Yeah, they have to.
There's a plant, our, uh, station right out here, Byshmucker's LP.
Oh, we done?
Um, yeah, let's see if you guys would like to cover it.
And anything else? Yes. Todd?
No, I'm good.
Thanks, Todd.
Thanks, sorry I couldn't be there.
It's okay, get on there, thanks, Todd.
We're good to stop?
Yeah.
First, we're gonna stop the streaming. And we're still recording at this point, and we're still recording at this point. So now we will go and stop the recording here momentarily.